Regular session of the Kent County Council. Tonight, the prayer will be led by Mr. Connor with Mr. Pauling to be with Stan.
God, you pray with me. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much. We pray that you'll be with us tonight as we keep your people's business, get us good judgment and discernment. God, please be with all of our public servants, whether they be abroad or here at home. Stay. All is in our being tonight in your sense, amen. For his sake, amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is to the United States, particularly the people who stand on our nation. In the name of this world, everything, and justice.
Thanks for the gentleman. Do you would do the roll call, please?
Scott.
Here.
Connor.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Warlock.
Time present by telephone.
Pauling.
Here.
Lemming.
Here.
Middlesbrough.
All of present and accounted for. Next item this evening will be the auditor's report.
Everything's going great. No changes. I did give you an updated financial report. There were some changes that needed to be made, some corrections while I was working on the annual report. Other than that, everything's good.
As you can see, the county general fund balance comparison monthly is similar to last year, a little behind. But again, as expected. Health insurance, I don't know. Still a little ahead of last year. On track there. Is there any questions for the auditor? Is there any other reports you'd like to see? Hearing none. Thank you, Angie. Next item for you this evening will be the approval of the minutes. First minutes, it's the regular session, December 21st, 2022. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the minutes of January the 18th, 2023 signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Minutes are approved. The next minutes reporting you this evening. The January 18th meeting minutes. I think it's the way of my background. Okay, should have in front of you the regular session of December the 21st, 2022. Is there any corrections or errors to those minutes? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. The next item before this evening will be the state of the judiciary. Mark Spencer, Judge Grant, Circuit.
Thank you.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, President and gentlemen, counsel. Pauling, could I have you take one and pass down? Thank you. Center around copies of power points that you have them to refer to. And Marcus is getting me set up here. Okay, so state judiciary, something that I've done since 2008 to give the council some background on what's going on in the justice system. Really probably one of the biggest parts, if not the biggest parts of the budget. And we've got a couple of things I would like to talk to you about this year that will ultimately need some action on as well. Kind of titled this state of the judiciary, goodbyes and hellos. And so other things we'll be talking about in addition to goodbyes and hellos are some unfinished business that you're familiar with. We'll go over a little bit of data about the system where we stand and then things that are new in the system as well. So in terms of goodbyes and hellos, let's judge Ken Worthy, as she is, as the governor signing her commission. She has been elevated to the Indiana Court of Appeals. So we bid her a fond farewell and we will miss her, as you know, she was an outstanding judiciary officer for us for quite a few years. She's taken her talents on to the next level. She'll do a great job for the state as well. Obviously, that leaves a vacancy for us. And so we have Senior Judge Mary Ann Voorhees, who just retired from Delaware County just this last year and has served as a senior judge. She is pro town and she will remain in Superior Court II until the vacancy is filled. Application process has been completed and so next step is interviews and those are scheduled, I believe, for next week. Governor will make an appointment following the interviews. And in terms of when that timeline, in terms of somebody appointed, when they could start, that's still a little bit up in the air. But we anticipate that would be sometime in the spring. So in the meantime, Judge Voorhees is keeping the trains running on time and the mail delivered on time and all that good stuff that we need to do. And Superior Two is a very busy court. And includes sort of a regular criminal docket and civil docket and then also has welfare and chins and termination of parental rights as well. And so very important to get an experienced judge in there to keep things going. As you certainly know, Sheriff Garcia, who's joining us, took office January 1st, as did Prosecutor Scott Hunt. And so that's another hello to the new office holders there in the justice system. And both hit the ground running immediately and have really appreciated their partnership in the process. We're working together on a number of different initiatives and so very optimistic in terms of kind of where things go this year and for the next few years as they have really hit the ground running. And we'll talk about some of those things that we're working on yet, even in this presentation. So some unfinished business. Jail population is high and higher last year than it has been in previous years. As you, I believe, know, our capacity is 274. You can see by the graph here, we've been over 300 on a monthly basis for the last 12 months. So that's obviously a matter of concern. In the summer months, we got significantly over, over 300. So you know, that it's a difficult situation. We do some things to try and address jail population. Releasing people that we can, holding daily hearings on for releases. But yet, the jail population has continued to remain over capacity. That brings up the subject of the de-home renovation. So we began discussing this issue in March of 2017 and we're what, close seven years down the road or so? And we report to you is that things have significantly worsened. As you, we have a significant felony caseload. We have, we believe, exhausted all the strategies that we're aware of to keep the jail numbers down. The jail is chronically overcrowded. It just got worse last year. We believe there's a relatively small investment to add jail capacity. We have a facility here just right across the parking lot that is unused and is languishing. And so we are, are again, making the recommendation to make renovations to juvenile facility so that we can have a detention center and expand our jail capacity. And we think now's the time to move forward. As you know, the detention center was closed in 2021. It was, I guess, for mold in this HVAC system and has not reopened. And so what that means is our juveniles cannot be housed locally. And so law enforcement has to transport them to facilities in other counties. There is no secure juvenile holding facility in Grant County at this point. That, to my mind, and to my colleagues on the bench, is a crisis. Here's the problems. Law enforcement has no place to hold juveniles when they're taken into custody. They have to transport juveniles to another facility. So for example, well, the facilities that we transported to in 2021, Allen County, Hamilton County, Clark County, Johnson County, Howard County, Knox County, St. Joseph County, Vigo County, Delaware County, and then the Department of Corrections. And why don't we just send them all to the same place? Well, it's subject to their availability, so our staff has to call around and find a place for them. Sometimes that takes a couple of hours to do. And then, once we find the place, while we're making calls, the, the police officer or the arresting officer has to stand by until we find a place and they have to transport the juvenile to that place. So if it takes a couple of hours to find a place because you've called six, seven, eight different places and then you secure a place and you make arrangements and then you're taking them to Clark County, you know, then that's, you know, four, five, six hours total out of an arresting officer's day. And as you know, law enforcement is not at full capacity and they're, you know, all of our local units of law enforcement are hiring. And so taking people off the street for four, five, or six hours or an entire shift is problematic. It affects public safety. County has to pay $120 to $200 per night for a bed, but this is only the housing costs. It does not count manpower costs of probation or law enforcement with the transporting, sitting with the juveniles until you have a place for them. Doesn't talk, it doesn't count system costs, so you have delays in court processing. Doesn't count access to justice costs because kids don't have access or they have decreased access to their appointed public defenders. It's not uncommon for us to have kids in multiple facilities, so not once. As I already indicated, transporting affects public safety. Research and common sense says that sending kids away from home is bad for kids. It's bad for kids. You are, oftentimes what happens is that if you're placing kids in these places, you're placing them with kids that are placed from all over the state and the reason they're in that facility is because frankly, they're bad kids. And so we're taking our bad kids and you're mixing them, you're taking our kids and mixing them with other bad kids and what do you get? More bad kids because those influences infiltrate each other. Comes an issue for the schools because there's no place for them to take kids who are acting out. The out-of-county placements may not follow through with the schoolwork that's assigned as well. And as I indicated before, sending kids to be with other high-risk or high criminality kids makes higher risk kids. And so we're making our job even worse. Because of the difficulties with our law enforcement partners, there are some kids that are being, before would have been put into detention, were being sent back home. So Magistrate McLean is here and he, and Nicole Garcia is one of our probation officers speaking with Chief Haley of the MPD. She completed her stats from last year and around 23% of the juveniles that MPD arrested last year had a gun on them. 23% of juveniles had a gun. So we're not talking about shoplifting. We're not talking about, you know, truancy and things like that. We're talking about some serious issues that MPD is, you know, addressing. And then, so it's either do the four, five, or six-hour long process or you release the kids back to the parents and they're back on the streets. You know, back with the guns. And it goes without saying that guns and kids are not a great mix. These are already kids that aren't making good decisions and you mix them up with guns. Goes without saying that the mental health of children has, since the pandemic, has gone down. So these are concerns and they could impact public safety. So I would urge you that we would move forward with the option of buying by the detention center into a multi-use facility that accommodates adults and we envision women in that facility and juveniles. We think it makes the most financial sense. We think it's most likely to meet the needs of the children in the juvenile system and it's most likely to retain the flexibility so that if our needs change in the future, we will be able to respond to that. So I would urge you to please put this on the front burner and make a decision to move forward with it. I think we've studied the problem enough. Okay. Idea of, and you've got this in your materials, just sort of some of the kid, things that the judges have been involved in throughout the course of 2022, so we've been busy. And we seek to involve ourselves at the state basis or state level because we often make applications for grants. And so I added up the totals of the grants that we, we applied for last year and it's $2,078,409. That comes into the local community. We don't use grant writers. We do it ourselves. And so it really provides significant benefit to the justice system as well. The amounts and types of grants are in your materials there. And so that's one of the reasons why we get involved at the state level, so that we can become aware of grants, make applications for them and people know who we are and they can trust us to give more grants to us. So that's been successful for us. Hello. Running out of batteries, Marcus. All right, there we go. So if we look at some numbers, our case filings are down a little bit from 2021. 6,082 cases that were filed in Grant County, in the county courts in 2022. It was about 6,200 filed in 2021. So they're down a little bit, not too significantly. But felonies filed went down a little bit as well. So that's the second year that felonies have decreased. I think you always want to see that number going down, but I'm going to wait and see if filing patterns may have something to do with that. So I know that we've, I've seen over the first couple of months as the new prosecutor has taken office that we've been, there's been some catch-up in terms of filing some cases from 2022. So we'll have to see what the 2023 numbers look like. But again, it's certainly optimistic to see that number going down a little bit. And again, the 1,041 felonies is still higher than every year between 2002 and 2019. So it's a high number still. Of those felonies, 829 are Level 6 felonies, which is the lowest level of felonies, which is good and bad. It's good because we don't like higher-level felonies to be committed in our county, but it's bad because Level 6 felonies generally are dealt with in the local system. And so, you know, for sentencing them, oftentimes they need to stay in the jail and probation or community corrections is done locally as well. So, you know, it still keeps us pretty busy when a great majority of those are Level 6 felonies. We can't just send them to DOC and forget them. I want to say thank you, first of all, to listening to our plea and request for addressing the courthouse maintenance issues and thank you to the commissioners who are here as well for their help on that. Painting is ongoing, as my understanding, flooring is going to be coming soon as well. And there's also been work on the exterior to attempt to waterproof the foundation and water infiltration. We partnered with IT for security, state improvement, our court improvement grant. And so we've got some upgrades to our facility or to our facilities with regards to security. It's about, what, $78,000 grant, I think. So, so that'll be really helpful as well. Some cool things happening over at the courthouse. I'll be excited to see it when it's, you know, experience it when it's done. I'm going to encourage you to come over when it's done as well. So thank you again for that. So it was much needed. Other things that I wanted to share, I'm sure we call local J-RAC, is became effective in 2021. And so in 2022, we started meeting together as a local J-RAC committee. It's Justice Reinvestment Advisory Council. And so different members of the, of the justice system are part of that committee by statute. And so we, we all get together and talk about the big questions and issues in the justice system. And so some things that we've been talking about in the local J-RAC are, first of all, the opioid settlement and I'll talk a little bit more about that, certainly jail overcrowding as well, the juvenile facility. We attended together a mental health summit in October as well and we anticipate making some changes to how we address individuals that are justice-involved and have mental health issues too. So really kind of tackling some pretty big and significant issues for public safety in the community. I want to talk to you specifically about the opioid settlement. And so as you might be familiar, there actually are a series of settlements with different companies that were manufacturing or distributing opioids. And so the first of that series settled at the end of last year. It's about $2 million, distributed over 18 years. $2 million is a lot of money, but over 18 years is not a huge amount of money, but it's significant. And we received the first part of that in, I believe, December of 2022. And that's in a non-reverting fund. And we anticipate that more funds are coming. There's CVS, Walgreens, Walmart settlement that's occurred nationally in November and December and that will trickle down to the local level here over probably sometime this year. I don't know yet how much that is going to be. And as soon as we get more information on that, I'll share that with the commissioners and council. Those funds are dedicated largely for opioid remediation. What that means is that for communities, the impact on communities through the opioid crisis. And so what the Association of Counties and our local J-RAC and our commissioners as well have recommended is that all of the funds that we receive in the opioid settlement be used for those intended purposes. And so we certainly request that as well. The funds are subject to reporting and audit to make sure that you're using the funds for their intended purposes that are set out in the settlement documents. And so we want to make sure that we stay within those parameters. And so we've been talking as a local J-RAC and with the commissioners about what to do with the first round of opioid settlement funds. And the approach that we took is we wanted to do something that we had tried and found to be effective, but we wanted to sustain and expand. So something that we would have pretty good confidence that it would work. So we had, our drug court had applied for a Bureau of Justice Enhancement grant and that gave us an additional probation case manager. That allowed us to increase our drug court capacity from 55 to 70. We also contracted with a treatment coordinator to connect people to help with applications to transportation and communication with out-of-county treatment facilities, oftentimes to be left to go to inpatient or sober living out of the county residential treatment as well. And then that individual also coordinates sort of recovery activities, more sort of gatherings and fellowship and activities and things like that to support people in recovery. That grant expires this year. But what is, those enhancements that we have done have been very effective. And so we believe that the opioid settlement, this first round anyway, would be useful in continuing that grant and expanding it as well. So our recommendation is, first of all, that we sustain that probation officer position that's dedicated to drug court. That initially can be fully supported by those opioid settlement funds and then gradually over the time, the county will have some matching funds to that. You know, we may have some more money coming in for opioid settlement, so if you wanted to dedicate that to that, that's a possibility or we could use the other funds for something else. So we'd also recommend that treatment coordinator position become a full-time position that serves all of the problem-solving courts and our regular probation. Oftentimes, the other problem-solving courts for regular probation are sending people to inpatient to treatment outside of the community as well. And, and so that's our, called CCS, but it should be CCP program as well as regular probation too. So we believe that those two positions can be largely supported by this opioid settlement. And Melissa has done sort of some work in terms of projecting what those costs might be, including benefits and things like that, and the amount of funds that come in. And so she's kind of spreadsheeted that so we can give you some details at some point. But, you know, again, I'll ask for your assistance in this, but I'm assuming we'd want to address that in this budget cycle in some way. And then, you know, so, you know, however you'd like us to sort of present that to you and get you that information, we can, we can do that. But that's really the recommendation we have with that first round of opioid settlements. As we have more settlements that come in, we'll continue to study that and give you some more recommendations in terms of how we might use those spots. And so, so we'll have a committee of the local J-RAC that will do that. Certainly, the need that we have in the community is acute with regards to opioids. Overdose deaths, if you're following the news, continue to be a concern. Fentanyl, we're seeing a lot more fentanyl as well, which is absolutely deadly. And if you look at 2022, I just pulled the stats on EMS incidents where naloxone was administered. So that's to counteract opioid, and there are 263 in 2022. So, you know, quite a few. So there is an acute need to continue to address those issues. And really, the best way in the justice system that we do that is with our problem-solving courts. So there were a lot at you, but I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you might have. And then maybe you could also give me some guidance in terms of how we want to address the positions, the early recommendations with opioids.
Do you have the averages of male and female inmates in the jail?
I can get that information, yes. Yeah, if that's broken down, we've got like a, yeah, I can get you that information.
I said one time it was around 50 or something like that, but I don't know.
Sheriff, do you know males versus females now, where we are?
Right around 49 females.
49 females.
Yes, sir.
And we're at 300 and 70 today. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
When you say approximately 2 million over the 18 years, is that just 2 million to Grant County?
That's just to Grant County. So other communities in Grant County receive money as well. Marion does. Marion and Gas City receive significant sums as well. The other communities receive smaller amounts. And part of the settlement is if the community in any one year gets $1,000 or less, then that actually goes to the county. So a small community gets, and they kind of, not quite sure how they figured out, you know, how much to give each county and community, but there's a formula that can trigger that.
I have some other question about the formula.
Yeah, and I don't know that specifically. I could probably find that information, but I don't know that specifically. I think it's probably tied to. I think it's probably tied to opioid death information, opioid prescribing information, so.
So, is there currently like between you and Angie, excuse me, an opioid type account, number of accounts for those monies?
Yeah, there's a, it's a non-reverting fund, I believe.
There's two, twelve thirty-seven opioid restricted and twelve thirty-eight opioid unrestricted. And there's about four-hundred thousand.
Thank you. So, we've already got it. It was kind of front-loaded a little bit because it was intended to start earlier than it ended up, we ended up getting it.
Out of those level six felonies, how many of them are due to the opioids? About eight-hundred and sixty-two, is that quite a few or?
It is, it is, Mr. Pauling. So, and we get really methamphetamine and opiates. So, common, most common filings that we see would be possession of methamphetamine, possession of a narcotic drug, possession of a syringe, which is, you know, commonly associated with opioids as well. So, really, if you look at those level sixes, the most common is a possession of some type of a controlled substance.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions or comments from the members?
How would you like me then to, how would you like us to address sort of the recommendations for that? Should we get that to you prior to budget time or include that? I assume we put in court services budget is where I would see that, so we would include that. Or how would you like us to approach that?
Why don't you give us some time to think about it?
Okay.
Get back to you.
Okay.
To me and you and Angie can sit down and talk about.
Absolutely.
On the process of rules.
Yep, happy to do that.
I appreciate you taking your time.
Melissa, yeah, she's Melissa's video, for sure, yeah. All right. Thank you very much, guys.
Appreciate it. First item on our new business, item A, Grant County Sheriff's Department Union Contract, Second Amendment Agreement, lateral transfer program.
Mr. President, members of the council, thank you for having me here tonight. The older I get, the more often I have to use my glasses, so I did bring them up here today. I do have some handouts to give you to make sure that we're, I know I emailed somehow, but I'm not sure how you guys went about doing that. So, I've got the first item on the agenda, which is the Second Amendment Agreement, and the lateral transfer. For those of you council members that aren't aware, we, I had an opportunity to meet with the negotiating committee from the council, along with the county attorney and the auditor's office, to talk about some plans that we have to make some improvements to, to the jail. It was at that time, Mr. Middlesworth did advise me prior to that meeting that those were actually contractual issues. So, we set up the meeting. It was during that meeting that I was informed and was advised that we would have to get the union to type out some type of agreement to, to just address the issues of adding a couple civilian positions to the, to the staffing of the jail. So, I met with the union leadership, went, talked to them about the ideas that we had. They agreed to take it before the body. That meeting, I think, was one of the most attended meetings that they had. And they overwhelmingly voted for the proposal that I had made to them. I think one person voted no out of all the members that were there. So, the union is definitely behind what we're trying to do. And I guess, with your permission, Mr. President, I can go ahead and talk about the, the ideas we have for the restructuring of the jail and lateral transfer program. I'm going to hand these out here. You could pass those along for me, please. You know, one of the things when I was running for sheriff that, that we knew we were going to have to look at was the issue with the jail. We knew that coming in, we had an issue with maning the jail. We had an issue with morale issues within the jail. We also had an issue with jail officers not feeling that they were equal to or kind of looked down upon by other members or other members of department and even members of the community at some, at some times, they didn't feel as they were equal. So, coming in on January first, we decided that we were going to start to look at what, what we needed to do to, to improve those, those issues. When we're talking about the manpower issue that we have, the staffing issue that we're having, on January first, when I came into office, we had, we were down nineteen detention officers. And that was, that put us around fifty-one or fifty-two percent staffing strength, which is not good for the county. It's not good for liability reasons, it's not, it's a safety issue for detention deputies, and it's a safety issue for, for the inmates. And also obviously becomes a liability issue for the county. So, one of the things that we decided to do to make sure that our, that our jail is being properly staffed, we want to restructure the whole command structure of the jail. Right now, the way the jail is operated is they have a merit deputy, a merit captain that was overseeing the jail. And I thought that it was important, number one, to put that merit officer back on the road to where they can help patrol the streets and help work and keep crime down on the street. So, I thought it'd be important that we created position, a civilian position for someone to run the jail for us. Along with that, I thought it was important to create a couple of, for actually sergeant positions so that we can properly staff and properly manage and supervise our detention deputies. And we actually, you'll hear me use the word detention deputy because we want to make sure that our deputies know that they are just as important as our road deputies. You know, someone once asked me, well, wouldn't, won't they think that a deputy is someone with arrest powers? And actually, if we look at what the definition of a deputy is, the deputy is just basically my representative to act on my behalf and to do things on my behalf when I'm not there. So, the road deputies do that on the road, our detention deputies do that in the jail. And I want to make sure that our detention deputies realize that they were equal to our road deputies. Maybe not equal in mission, but equal in importance. And I kind of look at it as an offense and defense type, type deal. Our road deputies are offensive players, and our, and our detention deputies are defensive players. So, I thought that was important that we, that we make sure that they understand that they're equal partners on the team, that they're not less than other members of the team. So, we went ahead and we are now referring to them as detention deputies so that they know that they are important to this. So, we wanted to restructure the jail. I brought on board Jason Camery, he's a former probation officer. And we have the same vision for the jail. We want to make sure that the jail, number one, is a constitutional jail, that everything that we're doing is, is based on the constitution. We want to make sure that we're offering every opportunity to the inmates to be able to rehabilitate them so that when they get back out of society, they're able to, to get jobs and actually be productive back in the workforce and in the community. So, and I think a big part of doing that is bringing a civilian person to actually run the jail, someone that's able to implement those programs, someone that's able, in fact, that Mr. Camery was one of the ones that actually helped start the MRT program in the jail. He was also instrumental in starting the GED or ABE, as it's called now, program in the jail. So, we want to make sure that, that we have people in place and positioned to do that. We also wanted to make sure that we mirror the, the staffing we have on the road. Because right now, what happens is if something happens in the jail, the jail staff has to call the staff officer that's out on the road to come in and take care of the problem. So, for instance, if we have a medical issue in the jail, that staff officer has to be called in from the road, has to come to the, to the jail, has to assess the situation, and then he makes the decision on what we're going to do. And the problem we run into that is you have some staff officers that work the road that's never worked the jail before. So, we want to make sure that the people that we have working in the jail, we want to make sure that they're able to function separate from, from the road staff. So, that's why we want to create the detention director position. And we also want to create the fore-sargent position. We believe that that will help improve morale because then we'll give detention deputies upward mobility. Right now, the way it was prior to January, it's actually still is now, we have one captain of confinement, which is a merit position, and that takes him off the road. We have two lieutenants. When I got there, both lieutenants were working day shift. What we're going to do with those lieutenant positions, we're going to put one on day shift and one on night shift. We have five corporals, and we have thirty-five detention deputies, a total of forty-three that work in the jail right now. With this new system that we want to implement, we'll have one detention director who will be a civilian. So, we'll be able to put that merit officer back on the road. We'll have two lieutenants of the state before that will work, one will be in charge of night shift and one will be in charge of days. We'll have four sergeants, each sergeant will be in charge of a crew. We have two crews for each shift. We have a, because we have to work twelve hours, it's rotating schedules. But we have two crews on each shift, one of the sergeant that will be able to run that crew. Then we'll have the corporals that will be back up to the sergeants because we'll need someone there when they're, when they're off work, whether it be for vacation time or just off time or injury or something like that. Then we'll have thirty-one detention deputies, which would be a total of forty-two. We think, like I said, this will allow us to be more efficient in operating the detention facility due to its having its own command structure. We won't have to rely on the command staff from the, from the road. It will elevate the position of the detention division as equal to the enforcement division. And it will allow for more upward mobility, the detention staff, and it will assist in improving the work culture in the detention facility. And we can create those positions when added with a sheet there. We can create those four positions or five positions without any new monies being allocated from the, from the council. We have a urinary tech position that hadn't been filled for some time. So, what we did is we ran the numbers, we took that salary and created those, and added that salary to create those positions. Ms. Jarvis went over the numbers, and we actually will save the county seven hundred dollars by doing that. So, my request is that we, that you guys would approve the, those, those positions because we need to get those added to the contract because they're currently not in the contract. And if anybody has any questions about the restructuring, I'd be more than happy to answer.
So, the first item on the agenda would be the Second Amendment Agreement. This time, I'll turn it over to Negotiation Committee Chairman, Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Sheriff, I just, I mean, we just heard the judge talk about information in the jail. And it's, I mean, I follow what you're saying, and I commend you for trying to make changes and to do better for the jail. And looking at this, and I'm seeing somewhat of a reduction. Can, can you, can you speak to that? Because, you know, we're going down from thirty-five detention deputies to thirty-one, and overall, we're going down one position. The last few years, we've heard about how understaffed that we are in, in the jail.
Well, what happened is, is a previous sheriff took one of the positions and actually put in charge of doing kind of double duty. They're working both as a jailer, filling in when we need someone to work the jail, and they're also doing commissary. So, I didn't put her in that position because she's primarily doing commissary. However, when we do have to transport individuals to the hospital, have to have a detention deputy sit with them, she, she's able to do that because she's certified as a, as a transport officer. So, that's why you see that one number difference there. And the, the four that you're talking about, it's, it's, we just moved those to sergeants. So, so they're, they're still there, they're still working. As I said in the meeting I had with, with the committee, is I think a lot of times people think that, that being a supervisor, you do less work. Under our administration, being a supervisor, they're going to do more work. So, they'll be, they'll have to still do the detention deputy's job, but also be a supervisor and have those additional duties that are, that are thrown upon them by taking those positions. So, so the manpower wise will still be the same.
So, no reduction?
No reduction. And I do want to say while we're on, on that topic, since, since January first, we've been able to hire eleven new detention deputies. So, I think nine of them are full-time, and I think we got a couple of part-time. So, we're moving in the right direction. I think we are changing the work culture. I think people are enjoying coming to work because they know that we are working to improve, improve that culture there.
I know you've been active on social media. I see, I see different posts of things that you're doing. So, to bring light to, you know, what's, what's happening within the department and sharing what, what you're working with and dealing with, I think is important for the public to see.
And that was one of our goals coming in, is we wanted to definitely be aggressive in our social media campaign to try to attract new employees. Matt Ogden, who's one of our work crew workers, actually has that up for us. He's doing outstanding, outstanding job with that. And we're, we're going to do more, not only social media this spring. We're planning on putting billboards up to let the public know that we still need employees. And we're praying that God will direct the right employees to us because not every employee that applies, obviously, we can hire. So, so we want to make sure that, that we're hiring the right people.
Well, like I said, I follow certainly what you're doing, and I commend you for the actions that you're taking. Being a newly elected sheriff and the jail, I know is not a, is not a glamorous position to, to watch over. You know, if I'm being honest, I philosophically, I struggle, you know, with, because what I see, I mean, to me, is opening up the contract. And we just had, we've always had a really good relationship, I feel like, in working, working with the union and, and our negotiations. And probably just about three months ago, we, you know, we had a, had a new contract that we both agreed upon. And now, we're looking at making the changes three months into it. I really struggle with, where does that go in the future? What is that going to do? If we could just open up a contract whenever we want to. To me, it's kind of like, why, why do we have a contract? You know, and so, you know, I'm really torn here between, because like I said, I do see the vision. I see where you're going. And philosophically, I just felt like that we have a contract that's in place, and we need to abide by that, by that contract. That's just, I mean, it's just my opinion, just kind of where I'm coming from. I just want you to hopefully understand and see from within where I'm at, you know, and looking at all of this. But like I said, I do want to commend you on what you're doing. But that's just, that's, that's where my struggle is at right now.
I definitely see what you're talking about, but I think we have to look at the big picture when we're talking about liability, when we're talking about doing what's right for not only the, the employees or the team members at the jail or even the inmates, but the liability that we face if we don't turn things around in the jail. So, I think that we have to look past, and specifically, when we talked about this, this specifically only affects that area of the contract. So, Mr. Stevens, I believe, was, was the attorney that was there. He made, he mentioned that, that it wasn't a good idea to open the whole contract. So, he wanted to make sure that whatever agreement we had, that it was specific to those issues that we were wanting to change for the betterment of the, of the detention facility and for the betterment for the community because the, because the community benefits from it. Like I said, the jail, and you mentioned it, the jail is our biggest liability. And if we don't fix those issues, it's going to cost us more than the, the thirty-some thousand that we're switching over. So, so we're not talking about any new monies being allocated. All I'm asking for is for the council's assistance in, in addressing a crisis that we have. As I mentioned in that meeting, I think what we do in government sometimes is we react to fires. We're trying to keep a fire from happening. So, I need your help. I can't do it. I mean, I've been in your seat before, obviously, in the, in the city council, and not county council. So, I definitely understand where you're coming from. But this is a crisis, this is a fire that we're trying to avoid. And we can only avoid it if the council helps us in doing so. So, this, this would only affect adding those, those positions to, to the contract. It doesn't affect anything else in the contract. In fact, the attorney with... In fact, the attorney was very clear, and we made sure that he was clear that no other portion of the contract would be up for reopening. Because I understand how that is, and we understand that we don't want to start making any, certainly, a lot of precedence to doing that, but we feel that in order to avoid the fires that we're possibly going to face, we think it's necessary to go this route.
Can you talk a little bit about the lateral transfer program?
Okay, the lateral transfer program, what we're wanting to do with that is obviously, as most people are aware, people aren't knocking our doors down to be police or to be jailers. You know, police work has taken a big hit in the media. I remember when I applied back in nineteen ninety-four for Marion, the whole cafeteria at Marion High School was full. Now we're lucky to get thirteen applicants. We had an opening for some positions here at the sheriff's office, and we have five applicants that are going to go through the process there. So people aren't knocking, are knocking our doors down to come and work for us. So what we want to do is, and a lot of agencies are doing it, they're doing what they call lateral transfer, which basically is that an individual, let's say for instance, if someone in Howard County is working at the jail in Howard County, been there for eight years, if they apply here and we hire them, then they would bring up, they can bring up to ten years, I think was what we said, the union voted on, up to ten years for vacation time and a longevity pay. Doesn't affect retirement, you know, if they're from a different retirement program than what we are, they start all over on their retirement. It only affects vacation time and longevity pay. So what that would do for us, it's, as we're replacing or we're adding new employees and new team members onto our staff, it gives us an opportunity to recruit people that have experience. Because the last thing we want is for the, for our jail to have a lot of inexperienced people. Liability goes up. So we want to try and attract people who have experience, people that can come over here, learn our paperwork, learn our system, and they can hit the ground running pretty quickly. And that's what the lateral transfer program would do.
Do you know what the financial impact of that would be to the county?
It would be minimal with the ten-year, and I'd have to, I'd have to sit down with Angie and figure out exactly how much that would be. But I think from our meeting, it would be very minimal for that because I think the, and I don't have the...
It would depend on the position.
Yeah, so...
That's kind of where I'm at right now, is the big unknown of financially what this is going to present to us.
Right, but it would be minimal. But you've got to remember, like I said once again, we're trying to prevent a fire. So if we bring people with experience, our liability goes down than having a new person. So, you know, Lord, you know, we hope that nothing ever happens, but we know things in government happens. We know that the jail is a big liability for the county. So I think it would be beneficial for the county for us to pay that little bit now than pay something big later on if something bad happens because we're not able to hire the amount of people that we want, and we're not hiring people with experience. So, you know, I think we have to kind of weigh the odds. Do we want to prevent the fire from happening, or do we want to work to put the fire out once it happens? My opinion, I think we, I think we should work to keep the fire from happening. We want to stay left of the fire and prevent it from occurring.
Do these civilians get paid as much as people starting out?
Do the civilians get paid less than what the merit deputies do?
If the jail's overcrowded, how does restructuring this, the Second Amendment, by adding more management people in there, help with the risk you're talking about?
Because we're able to supervise, we're hiring a lot of younger people to work there, so we need to make sure we have the right people in right positions to help supervise them. There was, there's a reason why we were down nineteen deputies. When I came in, there was a big morale problem in the jail, and if you go and talk to any jailer, they will tell you. I do a walkthrough in the jail at least twice a week. I go and I talk to the deputies every day. Every day, I make my appearance in the control room and in processing, and I go talk to them. I talk to all the deputies. So prior to January one, we had an issue, and the issue was we had a morale issue, and people weren't wanting to work. We've had three people that have come back to work since January one because they see what we're doing. They see that we're going in the right direction. So let me answer your question, once we get up to full manpower, obviously, we want to make sure that the people that are working the floors are properly supervised so we don't get into an issue to where we're being sued because someone failed to do something, especially the younger they are that we hire.
Are you still ten down?
Yeah, we're still ten down, and we're moving in the right direction. We're definitely moving in the right direction. We just need that extra push, we need that extra carrot out there to dangle out there to try to get people to come over and work for us because it's working for other agencies. I mean, we've lost people to other agencies that have lateral transfer programs, MPDs lost officers to other agencies. We can't offer what Carmel and Fisher's offers, you know, a twenty thousand dollar pay increase. You know, any little thing that we can do to keep people here and to attract people here from some of these smaller communities, I think would be beneficial for us. You know, we get, people poach our guys, and I hate to poach other people's employees, but we need to make sure that we're taking care of Grand County. I've been elected to make sure Grand County's taken care of, and I'm trying to do everything I can. It will give my power to make sure that we are properly staffed and we're moving in the right direction. I believe that implementing these two things is getting us in the right direction. Like I said, only one person on the union voted against it, so the union's for it.
In the future, what do you see as an issue or a success when you're going to reduce the number of detention deputies? There's a point where you've got to be looking out there, how are we going to keep this thing balanced by adding another layer of managers in there? And we still are overcrowded in the jail. What do we see in three years then that's not going to say you're coming back to me in two years and say, man, I need six more people after we just do this whole thing, complete change?
Well, I think what we've got to look at is we have to be able to, obviously, our goal is to get the jail population down. And obviously, the lower the jail population is, the less staffs required to monitor them. So our goal is to get that down. So we should be, we should be good with what we currently have, with what we're budgeted with, but that will be determined on how many more inmates we get. I mean, obviously, if it shot way up, I mean, obviously, we would need more manpower, but I don't see needing any more manpower if we're at our two seventy-four or low three-hundreds.
So the current staffing we're discussing would be for the full jail, two seventy-four plus, because we're, after what Judge Bitcher showed us, we're over, right?
And last year, we averaged three hundred, a little over three hundred and twenty inmates, and we have two hundred and seventy-four beds. In these first two months that we've been in, we've averaged about three hundred and twelve. We've taken steps to knock those numbers down. We've implemented a program where our detention director is meeting with judges, is meeting with the, with the public defender's office, with probation, with the prosecutor's office to see which inmates that we can let out because it's, you know, they're not high-risk, they're not violent offenders. We have one inmate that had a minor charge but had a very high bond, and our detention director caught that. We were able to go to the judge and say, hey, his bond is super high for this charge. The judge looked at it and said, I don't know why it shouldn't be that high. He reduced the bond to the proper amount, and the guy ended up bonding out. So we're working to get those numbers down, and I believe that we could stay where we're at right now. The staffing that we have would be added, but the numbers, and obviously, we want to get back up to full staffing, but the numbers we have are what we're dealing with.
So in Article One, is the food service and the cooks still contracted?
Yeah, those, it's a private vendor that does our cooking. Now, that's in there, and I'm not sure if that, and I've said it before my time, I'm not sure if that's referring to the cooks. We no longer have cooks that we employ. So that would be probably another member, some language that we would need to clean up next negotiations. Because we actually went to a vendor to do all the food services.
So this says agreement's effective through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, so this means that our next negotiation's going to be July of two thousand twenty-four?
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not sure when you guys are scheduled, but I think you do have, it opens back up in July.
Yeah, we'll open in July, but the current union contract's till twenty-four, I believe. Pays on... You have a question for Collins or members? This is uncharted water for sure. You know, typically, we deal with the union over these matters, and I just want to commend you for your leadership and, you know, being able to recruit, hopefully retain, you know, whoever you hire within your reign, so to speak. And I guess my opinion is, I think that when it comes to Article Two, I would support the amendment to, you know, add in the sergeants and the civilian captains in the Unit D, and I would support the pay, you know, removing the hiring tech position and dividing that pay up, you know, amongst the captain and the sergeants. I have a little struggle with the lateral transfer program, just do not know the cost, what is the net effect. Obviously, for you, hire someone with experience, you know, and I'll put them through the academy because it costs savings. But the other side of that I look at is, when it comes to the health insurance fund, you know, we're self-insured, so you start getting somebody a little older, you know, maybe the health insurance fund's going to get hit more instead of the younger person on the road or in the jail. So I would support that part of it. I'm not sure about the lateral transfer part. I'm not saying I wouldn't.
Yeah, we have to do this, Mr. President. What I can do is I can go back and run numbers to see what it would cost us financially, and I could come back at a later, later time to do that. Of course, it's kind of hard to do that because you don't know how many years' experience you're going to have. But if we can, if we can, maybe what we can do is, for the number of positions that we have, it's kind of average it out, and let's, you know, I'll sit down with Angie and see what number, maybe five years, that everybody's going to have five years or whatever. You know, we can at least get a roundabout number of what it would cost.
That would help me out tremendously. I don't feel like I'm in a position that I feel comfortable with, right now, making a decision on the second part of what President just mentioned. And I would even suggest max it out. If you think that you might be able to get somebody that has ten or fifteen years' experience, then max all those positions.
Okay, we'll max it out at ten years.
Because that gives us at least, it's not going to be any more than that, we know. Probably it's going to be a little bit less, or more likely it'll be a little bit less. But at least we know what our max number is so that we can make a better decision.
Like I say, I'm not saying no, but the other part of that too is, you know, when we open negotiations back up in July, pay, and then maybe that's something we can talk about too, if the union would be willing.
Okay.
I mean, I guess the other question is, maybe for attorneys, if, say we pass a certain part of this agreement, does the union have to go back and vote on a different amendment?
I would think to keep things probably most organized, yes. If you're going to say, we're going to reject this part but accept this part, that's almost like a counteroffer to the union. So I think it should go back to the union at that point.
My question would be, they're two totally separate items. One of them's just changing the language in, in the contract, which is adding the civilian positions, and the other isn't.
It's in the recitals on line three, I believe.
We're sure they're lumped together. They seem to be lumped together. Pardon your minute.
Again, this is uncharted territory for us, and that's why it's written in the seating gentleman. That way, there's no, there's transparency. So now's the time to ask your questions or...
I would just concur with what President Millsworth said. I mean, I can definitely, I can see the merit, I can see the advantage, I can, you know, the restructuring, I get, I can see that. So I would be in agreement with whatever it's worth, I would be in agreement to support that. The lateral transfer, I just would feel a lot better with having...
What I would ask is if we could pass what you agree with, because I want to go ahead and start that process with the restructuring, and the union had already agreed to the amendment for the restructuring of the jail, and then I can just take that, the other portion of lateral transfer back to them. But I'd like to get those done as quickly as possible because we want to go ahead and get going in what we're doing and implement the changes that we're making. I know it's cleaner to do it the other way, and I understand that, but I would request that if we could pass what you guys would be willing to at least accept at this time and then revisit the other one later. Because I did move to pass that portion of it also.
So when you raise these positions, these people's pay going up, but it's already in your budget?
It's already in the budget, yes, sir.
So you're saying like we could strike three and then send it back, and then you have to zone on it again?
You'd have to strike number three, and then where it says, I guess that would be Section One Amendment to Contract, that references Contract Exhibit A, which Exhibit A is the lateral transfer program. So the way it's been submitted to the council in its entirety as a Second Amendment, they're lumped together. It's not a proposed Second Amendment, proposed Third Amendment. It's all one Second Amendment. So...
So they'd have to go back and split and bring it back.
Again, I think that would be the cleanest way to do it the other way. If the council wanted to proceed tonight, is it would have to be made extremely clear that we're striking three and Section One as far as referencing Contract Exhibit A, but the way it's proposed, it's all one lump sum. I know that creates extra work on everybody's part, but...
And we're not worried about the extra work, we're just wanting to get the work done. And, you know, if you are able to strike those, as Mr. Meeks said, that's where we request, that we strike those out so that we can get moving and get to our work done in the restructuring.
What is the move of the council? Is there a motion?
I guess mine clears if we'd lump the support of the restructuring in this motion, or do we have to have two separate motions? Strike first.
I would do two separate motions.
Yeah.
So it would be strike number three?
Yeah, we'd have to strike number three, which refers to the lateral transfer program, and then the county union hereby agree to amend the contract by making the following changes to Article One, Section One Point Two, and appending to the contract Exhibit A here too. So that references, and appended to the contract Exhibit A here too, that would have to be stricken. And so then all you're doing is modifying the contract in Article One, Section One Point Two.
We understand what I'm foregoing, and I can't repeat all that. If I could make a motion based upon what Mr. Meeks just stated, so...
I have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it. That's to do the recitals, number one, number two, Amendment to Contract, Article One, Section One Point Two, striking the number three in the contract Exhibit... Correct. That would be my second.
Wrong. We should have made a motion. I have a motion, I'm second. Public input. You want to speak, come to the podium, and state your name and your address. We'll call please.
Before we do that, I, I didn't hear a chance to express concern. I think Nathan's right. I don't think you have a contract until they, the union votes on it. So when you talk, Sheriff, about proceeding, going ahead with the part we are passing, you don't have a meeting of minds, and you don't have a contract until it gets presented back to the union, in my opinion. I would just echo, echo that. So I would caution you to proceed with just what we pass until you get the union's okay. Because I know fault the way it was presented, it was presented as one amendment. So you don't have a contract until they speak to it. Not that it would be a problem, but that would be my only concern.
So if I may, Mr. President, could we, could we go ahead and vote on it and take it to a second reading, and I'll come back with, that way we can at least get the ball rolling, and we can bring back to you the amended one?
I think the second reading is for the first, the second reading of the first.
So the way I envision is that the motion in the second's going to amend this agreement. This agreement needs to go back to the union to be voted on. At that point, say we take action on the salary ordinance amendment tonight, okay? It would all be pending a union approval.
Yeah, it would basically be what I would consider a counter offer to the union.
Yeah.
The council's willing to accept this portion, but not this portion. So, yeah.
And so then at that point, it would come back from the union's side, and then we would.
I would suggest the motion be amended to, if contingent on union approval. And I think you're okay. You're the attorney, I'm just caps member.
Yeah, I would agree with you. Are you okay with that?
Yes. Yes, Scott? Yes. And we're thinking of the amendment.
Can you hold it up?
Yes.
Any other public comment, comments from the members? We'll call please.
Scott?
Aye.
Lemming?
Aye.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Warbach?
Aye.
Holling?
Aye.
Middlesbrough?
Yes. Actually, Kevies? Okay, now, when you want to address the salary ordinance amendment, which would be the restructuring of the dollars and the positions, and this would also be contingent on the union contract, is that correct?
Correct.
Is there a motion?
Does it need to be spelled out like we deserve? Just make the motion based on the presentation of.
Angie, you got all the figures? You just want to.
I do. I do have a question now. The salary ordinance calls them jailers, and are we changing position names to match what he's presenting?
At this point, no. In that second, there is no name changes to the jail. At least, why isn't my company?
Would be the, the February 15th memorandum. Right. Yeah, that's what I was thinking, that I could see a number there, so.
It would, the salary piece, I guess I can, we would eliminate the urinary tech position to the sheriff's department. And then we would add a detention, a cap, we add the detention commander. Correct. At the base salary of $61,740.
Correct.
Don't you got it, Angie?
Yes.
And then we are going to bump five position, detention. We're going to take five jailer positions and make, not five, four. We're going to make four jailer position sergeants, and that salary would be the $45,749. Correct?
The two civilians would stay the same?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And the, we'll call the corporals, five, four, they'll stay the same.
Correct.
The corporals go to four, right?
Correct.
That's the only.
Right, we took that fifth corporal position out of the base pay for the detention commander.
Yeah. And this would be pending. Any other questions or comments from the members? I have, this role, you make the motion, right?
Yes, with your numbers, yes, sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Mr. Lemming, a second from Mr. Scott. To approve the memorandum as presented, discussed. Any public input? Comments from the members? We'll call please.
Lemming?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Warbach?
Aye.
Holling?
Yes.
Middlesbrough?
Yes. Motion periods?
Thank you, Mr. President and this council. I'll, I'll get that to the union, and we'll get that back to you guys. Thanks, sir.
Thanks, Sheriff. Thank you.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Let's take a five minute session.
Our new business, Item C, voting for zoning appeals and apartment, additional appropriation and transfer of appropriation. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Matt Hartman with Board of Zoning Appeals, and my colleague Randy Atkins is also a member of the BZA and the APC. And what we're here tonight to do is to ask you to consider hiring an attorney. And we have one picked out. Take my pass one on. This attorney's, has a list of his experience. His name's Pat S. He's with the firm of Thackman and Lawson in Fort Wayne. And you can look down through his experience, and you can see that he has quite a bit in the area of land use planning and zoning. He spends about 50% of his time there, and about 10% in zoning litigation support. He has also worked for various counties and towns, BZAs and APCs over the years. Allen County, Zionsville, New Haven, Adams County, Fort Wayne, Allen County. And has also been president of the Land Use and Zoning Section of the Indiana State Bar Association. He's written numerous articles and presentations on zoning matters, and he does continuing legal education and provides zoning legal education seminars. So he is highly qualified. And anyway, we would like you to consider funding, hiring him to review the solar ordinance. Now, the solar ordinance is a big deal. This is one of the bigger things that's coming to Grant County, and we think this needs to be carefully considered, and we need to have it reviewed because we feel there's some irregularities in this that really need focused on by someone who is very knowledgeable in this area. Now, I'll start with, one of the things that comes out in this ordinance is the change currently, and in, well, actually, previously, according to our ordinance, they're changing the land use table to take it out of utilities. That's where it was in the category on land use table, and all the S's are for every zone category, it had to be approved by the Board of Zoning Appeals, who takes care of special exceptions for this kind of different use that is not normally done in that category. So it was under utilities. North American Industry Classification System categorizes solar farms as utilities. That's where it used to be. We believe that's correct. Where it's being moved to in the new ordinance is down here with planned unit development. We consider that most unusual. Now, when I've spoke with an attorney about this, just asking him, what do you think of that? He goes, that's obviously a scheme to get around the BZA and APC and control this process by the commissioners, since the commissioners will write a small ordinance for each solar installation. The other thing is that there's a development plan that'll go with this passage, and the APC is the sole authority to approve a development plan. That's my stinker. What's in the commissioner's ordinance is that the APC will recommend to the commissioners, favorable or unfavorable or no recommendation on the development plan. We believe that is a problem. So that's one of the things that will be obviously researched, as well as the moving it from planned unit development. The BZA has already approved two smaller farm, farms, solar farms in Grant County. One was over by AEP, the power station, over by the VA Hospital on Lincoln Boulevard. You've probably seen that. And the other one is outside of Gas City, near the Highway Department. The BZA is not anti-solar. If you come up with a good use for it and bring that, and that was brought to the BZA, they would pass it. We have many old industrial sites and brownfields, so to speak, that are not productively used, where this could be placed, and the electricity actually used locally to support this community and area businesses. And area businesses could also have solar installations to support their electric use. Those are all things that the BZA would be very much in favor of, as well as if our universities wanted to have a solar installation to support their electrical use. We, we would see those as undoubtedly good plans. And I know I'm speaking for the seven members of the board, but I think I know them fairly well. All seven of them, I did not vote, however. Six of them voted to have this ordinance reviewed because of the irregularities in it and the change from past practice. It makes it rather unusual. Okay. Now, one of the other things that was interesting to note was when the ordinance was coming into being, being created, the fees were set at $2,000 per megawatt for the solar fields. Okay, now, when the final draft came out, they were cut to $1,000 per megawatt, cut half, no reason given why. There's another thing that this plan has. The APC came up with an ordinance as well to send to the commissioners, okay? And it had pretty much different things in it. It had standard BZA approval. It had a large setback from a person's house to the solar panels of 1,320 feet. That's a quarter mile. Okay? In the commissioner's solar ordinance, it's 300 feet from the house to the solar panel. So that's a big difference. The other thing it had in draft seven that is not in the commissioner's ordinance is that out of property value guaranteed for residents nearby. That is not in the commissioner's solar ordinance. There's no protection for the residents of this county. Another thing that is absent from the commissioner's plan is the APC ordinance made the solar developers guarantee there's no slave labor in any of the solar panels manufactured. That is not in the commissioner's ordinance. What is in the commissioner's ordinance is that it should have a UL label, and that to count on UL to check the manufacturing. Well, these are coming from China. I don't think China's our best friend. One thing that we know in the supply chain is that China trades with North Korea. You could be wearing a shirt that says "Made in China." So could I. That doesn't mean it was made in China. It could have been made in North Korea with a "Made in China" label on it. That's what's being suspected in the supply chain. You can't count on China to do the right thing. I think we pretty well all know that. We did not go so far in the APC to put must be American-made solar panels. We've not put, that one was discussed, but that was not moved forward. There's, there's a lot of things to consider, there are differences. We think this, that these need to be checked, that we need to do our due diligence and check these out, that we haven't made a big mistake. It is something that's going to be a big issue in this community. If we know we're right with this ordinance, that would be a good thing to know. If we know there are problems, we need to get those fixed right away. The attorney that looked at this said, you really shouldn't sue over this. You ought to get it fixed. That's what we'd like you guys to help us with. I know it's $6,000 of the county money. I understand that, but I think it's a small price to pay to know that this is right or to fix what is wrong. Taking most of our time, we're sorry.
Real quick, in developing an ordinance, my understanding that the consideration of local tolerance is supposed to be taken, you know, how do the people feel about it? So through the process of developing this ordinance, there was public input that was shared in draft five and draft six. Keep in mind that the commissioner's ordinance draft four was the original ordinance that we started with. Director Malott from the APC, as the input was being given to the APC members, Director Malott would put in red what those concerns that the public had were, or he would make his own comments in blue. Throughout draft five, it shows where the public input or the tolerance for this was reflected, but unfortunately, that was not given consideration by the commissioners. There was all or no discussion in regard to how they plan to, if they plan to amend their original draft four in order to accept that local tolerance by the input of the residents. It's not in draft four. So basically, the people really didn't have a voice. During commissioners' meetings, we were at the end, or people who wanted to speak were at the end, and they were given about 10 minutes, two minutes each, and there was never a feedback from the commissioners in regard to what their thoughts were. And there was never a feedback from the commissioners in regard to what their thoughts were about the ordinance until it was passed back to the APC with their ruling on. There is some litigation, I believe, Senate Bill 33 and 403 right now about how to recycle these panels. That's a big concern. I don't believe that there's, that there's conditions in draft four. And I think that's something that we seriously need to consider is what are we going to do with these at the end of 35 years? We know they're going to depreciate in their effectiveness over time. Everything does, you know, electric vehicles, $7,000 battery when that one runs out. Is that car going to be worth $7,000 when that battery runs out? What are we going to do with all the cars? What are we going to do with all the batteries? I mean, these are considerations that we haven't been taking when we move towards this renewable energy and the use of alternative means. We really need to make sure that we get it right.
There's another thought to consider in this. If a solar company sells the solar farm to a public utility, that public utility can claim eminent domain and take additional land for an expansion. There is no limit, commissioner's ordinance on how much land could be used. We're shutting down one longtime profitable business in this community that's farming to replace it with utilities, a solar utility that is unreliable. Only works well on sunny days. Doesn't work all night long and it doesn't work well on a cloudy day. Solar companies admitted, put out 10 to 25% on a cloudy day. So you must have a complete backup system when this isn't working. There's no way other than to say this is extra cost when you look at it. It's going to raise utility bills. It's going to raise it substantially, and it's not a good plan. There are other things coming that far exceed this. And in a lot of counties across this country, there are people pushing back that this is a bad idea. May not be the most in thing to say, but that's the way it is. The Green New Deal is not a great idea here. It's a bad idea, and we need to look and work for something better in the future. Solar companies, some of them said, you know, if you have a 13, 20-foot setback, it's going to be almost impossible for us to develop in your county. But, you know, okay, here's a little map. And it shows each one of these is a county mile. And in the middle there is a yellow solar farm. And there's a quarter mile around that solar farm, and every bit of that could be farmed. You have corn all around it, little blue boxes or houses. They wouldn't hardly see it if there was a corn crop in between them. But anyway, it's not such an impossible thing to do, is what this shows. And this would equal a 5-megawatt, 50-megawatt solar farm. Okay, that, pass that around. That's, that's just an example of what could be done. A 1,320-foot setback is not an absolute deal killer. In our county, we've got electrical lines running through here en masse. And they'll be back if they don't get what they want right now. They may go elsewhere for a while, but if this is going to be an ongoing thing, they'll be back. I say we don't need to rush and we don't need to make it hard on ourselves and our residents. Here's Invenergy's plan. This is Delaware County. It's just clear up to the county line with Grant County. As you can see, little tiny white squares, those are homeowners and their property. And in some cases, they're surrounded or on three sides. Here's Invenergy again with their plan in Madison County, and you'll see about the same thing. They surround homeowners. A little town of Dundee in the middle there is all but completely surrounded, has a little space there that is not on all four sides.
So this is where farms are, solar farms are now?
That's where they're going. That's where they, that's where they're trying to build. And they've applied Madison County. It's gone all the way to the Supreme Court. The residents have sued to stop that solar farm. And they have not won, but there was an interesting little clause in there. They, they put in there, you had to be done by December 31st, 2024. Invenergy didn't get right on it because of COVID, because of whatever other reasons, lawsuits, delays, and not the ability, they have the inability to get these solar panels right away. They can't make that deadline. They went back to the BZA and said, we need a couple more years. We need until 2026. Well, the BZA kind of changed people after the public ground swell against this. And they said, no, you either get it done by the end of 2024 or don't start. So right now, they're at an impasse. They're suing, Invenergy is suing Madison County BZA because they wouldn't reconsider their contract that they had with them. They're also going to the Indiana Regulatory Utility Commission, trying to get that overturned as well. So there are things that are happening. People are not happy with this in counties nearby. It's not a popular thing, and it's not good for your economy. These companies are from other states. Electricity sold by them is not staying here in Grant County. Your farmers live here, spend money here, support many businesses here in the area. Your dollars are here. The multiplier effect for your economy is great.
This is about attorney. This is way off your point.
I understand. I'm just trying to bring you up as to why we're doing it. And I'll close now, if you have any questions.
The request is whether $6,000 for the BZA to hire an attorney. As I recall, at the last council meeting, this body gave APC a go ahead to spend the funds to hire an attorney. Knowing that, you know, if we used your funds, you'd come back and we would appropriate more funds. What, what was the outcome, I guess?
Well, there was an APC member that watched it on Webbed and didn't walk away with that understanding. And as a result, I believe there's been influence on the other APC members not to go ahead and support that in here of the council not giving them money if they expended that money towards this.
I have some questions. You want to hire Patrick Hess to review the solar ordinance, correct?
Yes.
Did Mr. Hess or someone else from his firm draft the first version of the ordinance that you submitted to the commissioners?
He did extensive work on that ordinance.
Who paid for that?
I did.
Personally?
Personally.
Mr. Hartman, oh, I heard for several minutes now is your position and probably representing others against solar in general. Well, let's just cut to the chase, okay, and be actually honest with each other. You may not be anti-solar, but you're anti-solar if it takes up any farm ground, correct?
Yes, I think that's not a good use of farm ground and it's not supported by our company.
Can I please be to be, like you said, you know, actually honest about that? Aren't you willing to spend your own money to have this reviewed?
I think it sends a message more than just the money. If we're willing to do due diligence in this county and make sure that we're right.
Well, I haven't heard, I made extensive notes while you were both talking. I haven't heard one thing. You said that there are irregularities in the ordinance. I made the list. Now, one thing that you mentioned was illegal. Well, all the things you mentioned, you were critical, you didn't like in the ordinance, but not illegal. Yet you want to take county taxpayer dollars to have Mr. Hess review an ordinance that he drafted the basis for. And you said he, you shouldn't sue over this, he says, but get it fixed. Well, the implication is if you don't fix it, we're going to sit. That's what it sounds like to me. Why not take this up with the commissioner? It sounds to me like you don't like the qualities that they put in their ordinance or the lack thereof. If people don't like it, they can move the commissioners out. Sorry, commissioners, I'm not suggesting that. But that's how you take care of something like that. Why should the county taxpayers pay to have this ordinance looked at? Because you don't like the qualities or the lack of certain provisions, which I, you know, by the way, I might agree with. Do I want to get China business? Hell, no. I don't. But that's not a reason, in my opinion, to try to go around, you know, backdoor the commissioners and get, get this looked at by an attorney, because that's nothing with the penalty gal.
I don't think we backdoored here. We brought, we brought it to the attention that the development plan is the sole responsibility of the APC from the Indiana Code. We brought that to their attention. Mr. Wright, Commissioner Wright has heard that. There was a point of order before draft four was adopted where we were going to share that with them. Commissioners did not want to hear that. There's been an effort truly to bring the concern to the commissioners. I don't, I can't understand why they haven't.
So if you don't like how this council is spending taxpayer dollars, are you going to come back someday and ask for some attorney fees to have what we do looked at? And maybe challenged? What's next? Or what Sheriff Garcia is doing, you don't like that, so you get that looked at? Taxpayer dollars? You know, it sounds to me like Mr. Hartman ran out of money and doesn't want to spend anymore to have this personally reviewed.
Now, yeah, I think that's a narrow, a very narrow conclusion for you to draw, personally. You know, I, I shared with you that from my perspective, when I was in here the first time, that the hope was that we could capture the attention that it is not correct with Indiana Code, which would hopefully promote an amendment provided by the commissioners.
Sounds not consistent with Indiana Code. What's illegal about the commissioner's ordinance?
The APC is the sole authority to approve a development plan. That is state code.
And you believe that a solar farm is a...
The APC under this ordinance does not have sole authority to approve the development plan put forth by the solar companies. And the planned unit development, that's new. That's not been around. That's new in this state. Using that for a utility, a single-use utility, not a mixed-use development as planned unit development is like a small town practically, a suburb with mixed uses, housing, service businesses, entertainment. It's all planned through an ordinance, even to the detail of what goes between the sidewalk and the curb, what type of tree you can plant. All those, that's, that's planned unit development, mixed uses.
Do you three that the commissioners are the final authority on enacting ordinance and ordinance? And the APC does not have the authority to enact ordinance?
We believe that the APC begins the ordinance process and guides it from beginning to end, and then does approve, send it to the commissioners for their approval, amendment, or rejection. When the APC sent an ordinance to the commissioners, they did not do that. They rejected it and they substituted an ordinance back. That's also a problem with the process they followed. There are many things that need to be looked at.
They are not bound to follow the ordinance you submitted?
That's state code. They are bound to either amend it, reject it, or enact it.
They amended it.
State code. They did not amend it. There was not one sentence taken from that ordinance, and it came back as ordinance draft four, their original. There's nothing like it. Now, we don't want to litigate this with you, and we're not attorneys. That's why we want to hire one.
I'm also, I, I question getting secondhand information from Mr. Hess. I wish he were here so I could ask him some of these questions. I'm hearing basically hearsay, what he had to say, his opinions, and what other members of the board had to say.
He has to thoroughly go through this ordinance. He hasn't been through it. We're going to, we would hire him to do that.
Man, so what, what's the outcome with me? We have an ordinance. You're going to let him go through the ordinance? What's your outcome when he comes back and he says, yes, it's state, follow state mandate? At that point, what's, what are we looking for then?
Well, if there is actually things wrong as we suspect, then the amendment process should be started.
But if there's not?
If there's not, then there's no amendment process. If there's nothing wrong, then that's it, guys. That's, we have at least found out what we need to know.
I mean, I guess I'm just trying to think. I mean, you're telling us there's something wrong. And I'm just saying, the commissioners obviously are trying to tell us without telling us. There's nothing wrong. We've done what we've done. And as a council, we're looking at as, in some sort of, I'm speaking for myself, but conversation is outside of here, an insurance policy of saying, we want to protect ourselves because we, as Grant County, don't want to be sued over ridiculous stuff. So if there's something wrong, yes, we would like to have it found, fixed, and go along accordingly. But I'm just saying, if we're going to hire and spend $6,000 on an attorney and he sends it back to us, I don't know the next process is my point. So...
The next process is the amendment process to fix an ordinance.
How does that work?
The, the APC could propose an amendment, or the commissioners could propose an amendment back to the...
We don't think we're going to end up in court anyway, because me personally, I think you really end up in court no matter what.
That's not our intent.
That's not the intent.
I mean, this, you know, that's...
The intent may not be there, but possibility, that's going to happen.
I really don't want us to do that.
Did you ask the commissioners for the money?
No. You know, we've tried to talk to them in commissioner meetings, and we haven't had much luck. We get to make a comment, but we don't get a questions and answers.
Well, again, you don't like how they're doing it, and I understand. If I were accused, maybe I'd feel the same. But just because you don't like what they're doing or how they're doing it, doesn't make it illegal and worthy of us paying $6,000 to have somebody come in and put them into the magnifying glass.
Well...
I don't see how this is any different from the last time you, Mr. Atkins was here and argued this point and died for lack of a second.
Well, last time, the APC had $12,000 to spend in their budget. The BZA has no budget. The APC did not want to spend the $12,000 because it was being said in that APC meeting that the council will probably not give us any more money if we spend it on this. We don't want to spend it on this. We want to spend it on our legal expenses that we need. I think some of them weren't there to hold that.
And by the way, Mark Luntz, you said something about the commissioners don't want us to know. What was that?
I could, sorry.
They do want us to know. Mr. Bartley sent an email, all of this. And they're, I mean, this pretty clearly states their position. Good afternoon. I'm checking in with you regarding a request coming before you from the BZA. I have reviewed the request filed for the council and will share these concerns. The BZA is a quasi-judicial board that makes decisions based on established state law and local ordinance. Correct. The focus of that has to do with special exceptions, variances, and appeals on APC actions. They deliberate on the merit of the issue slash request for them. They are not a legislative body to produce or generate ordinances. That is outside their board objective. I would not recommend any funds for this issue. I would not recommend any funds for this issue. Sincerely, Markey Bartley. He's absolutely correct on all of those legal points, by the way.
Did he mention why he hasn't, uh, provided an amendment for-
Did I read what he had?
I didn't hear it.
Then he didn't.
I was hoping that would be in there.
That's a rhetorical question. Well, blame.
Do you think that he should try and influence your votes?
Aren't you?
Yes, we're here.
Aren't members of the public? Aren't people that I hear from, my constituents? That's called democracy. Criticize it if you want.
You, you said that was in an email. I'm glad you read it so that we'd all hear it.
It's public record. I have no problem reading a public record.
That's good, but we wouldn't have known in other ways.
Well, you're welcome.
Well, anyway, I, I think we, we've really made our position with you. I don't know what else we could say that would make a difference other than we would appreciate your support. And then I think it's also in our collective best interest to know that this is a good ordinance, or know that things need fixed, and that we just don't go ahead and grant applications and build solar farms under it and then find out that it's, that it's not right. Any other members of comments?
I guess my confusion is I'm not sure if sitting here is trying to be a mediator or trying to help and assist in a resolution, either a disagreement or unwillingness to, to sit down. I mean, to me, it seems like, lack of better words, the adults in the room need to sit down from these three boards and iron this out. Why that can't happen is, is beyond me. And I hear some codes that may be into, in, in, in question. There's some codes we need to get a resolution of. How do we go about getting that resolution? Mr. Hess may give that, and I agree with where, where Mark was going. If Mr. Hess comes back and says, absolutely, there is, that is, does not match code, where, where do we go from there?
I would hope that they'll, that the commissioners would respect his opinion. I understand they're not jumping to go to change. Based on mine, I'm not an attorney.
So is it possible for the three boards, the commissioners, a representative from the commissioner, representative from BZA, representative from APC, to sit down and iron this out?
I think there's been efforts made, you know, trying to draw some consensus and some sharing about, um, you know, the ordinance, and I, I don't feel that there's been a cooperation on the commissioners' part. The APC has just taken on 40 members, have had absolutely no input or participation through this ordinance process that seems to have, um, I'm straight up guy, taking control of the APC, even though they weren't part of it from the beginning. You know, the, the appropriate thing in my perspective would be that the, that once we determine that there is a problem, the APC initiates an amendment back to the commissioners. Because the APC has a right to submit an amendment at any point. Doesn't mean the commissioners, you know, have to do it, but they at least should take it into consideration.
But in the end, the commissioners are gonna call it, Mike?
Yes, that's what you're saying. That's their authority. They are the legislate, or the, uh, executive branch of county government. Yes. We may not like it, but the remedy is not to seek an attorney on it. The remedy is to vote different next time if you don't like what they're doing.
That's two years down the road, and this will be well underway by then.
It's imperfect.
Well, unfortunately, once an application is received by the APC, its grandfathered in under that ordinance. It's about that time.
That's the law, again.
I've said it in the last meeting, I think that, you know, from the beginning, there's questions on both sides and all parties. Again, I go back to the insurance policy deal. If somebody could review it and know, okay, yes, this violates state statute, this violates state statute, and that's the scope, and that's all we're gonna look at, I don't see any problem with it. But when it goes outside the scope of what violates the state statute, then it becomes, you know, you know, a shoving match, so to speak. So I guess, uh, again, I, I have no problem with the funding. Maybe, maybe, uh, I guess it'd be nice, like Mr. Scott said, if you guys could sit down together and, and maybe, you know, a committee, uh, would hire, pick the attorney higher in the scope of looking at it would just be what violates the state statute. And I don't know if you, if that would work or not, but, uh-
I'll bet you any amount of money, if they, if they got the attorney and have reviewed, you get a lot of, it ought to have had this, it ought to have had that, but nothing illegal. But, you know, I'll just conclude by saying this. There is no precedent for BZA to hire counsel to review or challenge ordinances passed by the commissioner. None. They pass, they are quasi-judicial group, and that means they make decisions that are subject to judicial review. That's when they can hire an attorney to defend their decisions in judicial review. I know, I was a hearing officer for the state of Indiana, administrative law is my best area. The BZA only hires counsel to defend its own decisions, and that's it. The, the area plan has broad authority to sue or be sued, but they would lack any standing to challenge this, because then, unlike a private citizen, they can show no harm to them. Harm is required to have standing to sue. So why hire the attorney even if it was the area plan asking to do it? The bottom line is, this is something a private citizen could do to look at this if they don't like what's in the ordinance, if they think it was a violation of Indiana Code. It is not appropriate for one branch of Grant County to be doing this to another branch. It's crazy, and this needs to end. They do need to sit down and talk about it and frankly stop trying to give taxpayer dollars to fight their fights for it.
Any other comments from the members?
I mean, a lot of good points, and you, you can find arguments, and, and either way, I, I think at some point in time, we need to get a resolution on whatever code that, that we have, that same question. I don't know of, of, of allowing Mr. Hess to review the entire ordinance is, is the answer. I, I tend to agree with Mr. Millsworth that whatever is in disagreement needs to be examined. On the other hand, if we are talking about Indiana Code, is it really that lengthy to examine? I mean-
Apparently $6,000, like they-
You know, attorney is going to look at the Indiana Code, look at the ordinance, and be able to make a fairly quick decision on, thank you.
It is fairly lengthy. It is kind of complicated, especially in the-
There's gonna be, there's gonna be in the Indiana Code, right?
Indiana Code's lengthy and complicated.
I mean, I, I-
He's right on that.
I share the same sentiment. Um, I could support, Mr. Polling and I was at the last APC meeting, and believe me, I was enlightened beyond any, any description. We have an issue, needs to get resolved one way or another. If we are a body to help that, then by all means, let's do it. This, this has went on long enough, and we need to move forward, however that is. I'm not saying we need to spend $6,000.
Well, I'm just saying, if you, even if you get a lawyer, Mike, and even if the commissioners are right, right? And this kills this whole thing, and you get on with it. Correct, Mr. Commissioner?
Just here, I'm literally. But we don't have a proper advertisement to be able to appropriate any additional funds right now. I would also agree that I'm not, I'm not certain that any funding to BZA is the appropriate body in, in, in the first place. Maybe there's some examination that we can look at, where there could be some possibilities and opportunities to be able to capture some dollars that would help in this manner. I think that is going to come back to some, maybe some additional, uh, conversation. I don't know why the three, again, I'm gonna go back to, I don't know why the three can't sit down and, I don't know, do we hire a mediator? I don't know. Is, is, is that, is that where we're at?
Yeah, let's start. I don't mean to make fun of your idea, I know that's-
I'm just, I'm just throwing something out there that-
I, I love it if they kept us, or having, rehashing this, but are we really gonna start having mediators, you know, deal with council versus a recorder, or the auditor, or the treasurer, or the courts, or how, where does it end? I don't know. I mean, theoretically, all these folks have their attorneys already that we paid for. This is a slippery slope.
I would like to add, and I mentioned at the last meeting, the, the other thing that I look at too, um, it was the same attorney reviewing with the commissioners in the APC. So there really was no check and balance. Is that common in most counties?
No.
It's recommended you have a different attorney in case you get in a conflict situation like this. So we didn't feel we could go to Kyle Ursinger because he's the commissioner's attorney. For what it's worth, that Hess says that yes, the BZA can do this, because that was one of my first questions.
You did what?
Can we actually hire him to investigate this ordinance? Says that's, yeah, you can do that. Uh, you don't have a budget, so you need to get the county council agree to pay the bill. And he said, $6,000 is at the very outside, and probably will be less.
Forgive me if I'm not surprised by the fact that Mr. Hess feels that you can do it when he's gonna get $6,000.
You know, he really doesn't need to work for us. He's got plenty of business. He's a very busy man, and he's a very good attorney. That's why he was chosen. But he was willing to do it.
Are you willing to sit down with the commissioners?
Yeah, we don't have any bargaining power, to tell you the truth. It's already done. Their ordinance has already been done. They have signed it as law, and they have no reason to change it unless we can give them definite substantial facts based on a very competent attorney that can still say We would at least like to know. Uh, that's good government.
I still don't see where this is going if Mr. Hess comes back and says, yes, there is a violation. I don't see, but we're gonna come to a resolution.
It would be, in my perspective, I would highly encourage as an APC member that we make an amendment to it. The APC initiates amendment back to the commissioners.
Well, the commissioners got to know by state law too, right? When making their ordinance?
Yes.
But why can't we do that now if you've already spotted two or three discrepancies?
We've made the commissioners aware, but why haven't they?
They're not reaching out to us. I mean, and as you can see, they don't want to let you give the money to us. They've sent you an email that he-
If Mr. Hess comes back and says, what they did was illegal, and you present a letter for Mr. Hess to the commissioners telling them that, and they tear it up and throw it away and say, so what? We're probably gonna do a thing.
But they get it by state law, right?
What happens then?
That's a good question. I, I, I didn't really think that they would do that.
I understand, but I just, we have to deal in terms of what is-
I don't know. We'll have to deal with that when we get there. I, I don't think that's realistic. I, I think they're reasonable. If they are shown this is definitely a violation by a very competent attorney, I think they would possibly take counsel themselves and say, what do we need to do?
But if they don't, wouldn't you have to sue them?
I'm not, I, the BZA is not going to sue them, I do not think, and neither is the APC. So I don't know where you go at that point. You might be a help to us, though.
Commissioner Wright, shouldn't you guys just take it out of your budget to give it to them to make sure we're all by state law?
So I'll speak. Kind of, you know, it's like- See, right, panel commissioner. Ever since I've been that commissioner, this has been off the front burner. Spent my first four months, uh, trying to figure out what is the best for Grant County. They're right, there has been a lot of meetings. I would say the pitchforks and torches come out to meetings, as we all know, as elected officials, and when people are against something, that's who shows up at meetings. I can tell you that I've talked to several people who are for, and they want. And I find it interesting that the local farm bureau says they're not taking a stand on it because 50% want it and 50% don't, but we all hear about the people who are against the 1,320-foot setback that, um, Mr. Hartman showed you. It's just not feasible, and it's gonna chew up more farmland in the long run than if we do the big plots that the solar companies are wanting to do. It also is less fencing, less everything around our community. And I know what they're saying, they're condensing it down into the center where it can't be seen, but it's not feasible to do that. These projects are $200 million projects. When we talk about taking all the farmers' land away from them and things, we have 190,000 total acres here in Grant County. We're talking of all four companies who are looking at us right now come, we're talking about 4,000 acres. Right, 2%. I know that there's, there's a lot of concern of, from farmers to have, to compete with paying $250 an acre for, uh, cash cropping, and that solar companies are willing to pay $900. So you take landowners who want to make more money with their land than what the farmers are willing to pay for the cropping, um, to me, that's taking away their rights of owning their own land. And we're telling them by creating an ordinance that would be against something, uh, to the point where solar companies wouldn't take a look at us. That, uh, is one of those things where, how about if I come up with an ordinance that says, I talked to CIE out here, and they're running short on corn. So I'm gonna come up with an ordinance where you can only grow corn for the next five years. That's, that's what they're asking me to do as a commissioner. And I, I just don't think that's right. I don't think that would be right to them, and I don't think it's right to the landowners to say, I'm sorry, for 100 acres, you can only make 250, or $25,000 a year compared to $90,000 a year, so I'm gonna take that right away from you. That's what they're asking me to do. And I, I've studied it, I've looked at it, uh, I've been accused of not having enough time because I'm new. I, I have done my due diligence in this whole process and feel that it is the best thing for Grant County. All 66,000 of us, not 230 or 240 that shows up for a meeting. And so that's kind of where I'm at as a commissioner. I really am, um, with, with the idea that they say that they told us what's in the ordinance that they're, they're against, I can tell you that not one of them had been to my office to say, let's take a look at this ordinance and see what this says. We don't think that goes along with Indiana state code. Not one of them has come. True. Okay? And so from our perspective, we hear about China. I don't know about you guys, I've seen Chuck's phone out there, Ryan. That probably come from China. We all got stuff in China. You know, I can't control where stuff comes from. I'm not happy with it. Do we want, wanna give up our phones? Do we, you know, do we want to do that? The last storm, the winter storm that we had, we gotta let from AEP saying, look, ask your citizens to stop using because we're, we're taxing the grid right now. Would the solar project help in power to the grid? When he says that, you know, this is gonna be sold elsewhere and stuff like that. Electron doesn't care where it goes. If it's thrown up here in Grant County, guess where it's gonna go? It's gonna go here to Grant County because it's the closest place to go. So I just, you know, I know people from across the United States buy power, I am GM out here, you know, they're taking a look at that and trying to figure out, they've got goals that they gotta meet and stuff, where's that gonna go? We, we don't know. Can they buy it from someplace else? And I don't want to keep on belaboring, but I just heard a lot of things here tonight that really is just the normal things that we hear as commissioners at our meetings and things like that. I just wanted, okay, what's wrong with the ordinance? Highlight what you disagree with, and let's check it out. That'd be a novel approach to government. That'd be a novel approach to government, wouldn't it?
So you're willing to sit down with the APC or BZA?
I'm on the APC.
And?
Okay, and more than happy to sit down with a small committee and say, look, here's what we need to do. But as you can see and you heard tonight, no matter what we do, it's not going to be right. That's what we've been up against as commissioners.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Did you have legal counsel?
Yes.
When you were passing that ordinance?
Yes.
Did you make sure it was within state codes on everything?
We feel that we did, yes. Our counsel would have done that.
And that was kind of personal?
Yes. And so we feel that we're on solid ground. I know that Ryan Malott took a look at a lot of the other solar ordinances all around us, across the state. I think he looked at 34 different ordinances that was across the state that was either being developed or was already in place. And so trying to get those different things and writing those kinds of things into our ordinance. And again, I came in and the, I came in on June 29th. Actually, June 30th was the next day. And I had to make a decision on July 5th for this whole thing. I had done a lot of homework up to that point because I knew this was a hotbed right before, and I knew that the vote was coming up. But that ordinance was sent back to the APC for their review.
Would you have any problem with a private citizen hiring their attorney to look at what you did?
Not at all. Not at all. I mean, we, honestly, I'm with you, Mr. Connor, to spend tax, not the dollars. I just really struggle with that when we really haven't done our homework. As Mr. Scott was saying, can't you guys just get together and, you know, but here's the problem. Some of us can agree to disagree, others can't. And that's the problem we're having. That's the problem that's been on that APC board ever since I've been on it. It's been a us versus them. Mr. Bothwell spoke it out at our last meeting that you guys probably heard. And it is, it's, there's certain fractions of things that go on where there's just like a control type thing. And I just wonder, again, this is as a citizen, but also kind of peeling back an onion. Over the last 20 years, we've lost 22,000 people in Grand County. 22,000. Why?
Because nothing is welcome here.
Imagine that. And oh, by the way, the APC's number one responsibility is to create the comprehensive plan and review it every five years. You guys know when the last time the APC updated the comprehensive plan? 1997. And oh, by the way, in that one, it talked about taking the bypass to four lanes. That's the last comprehensive plan that we've had. So to me, we should be more worried about a comprehensive plan instead of losing people and become positive in our meetings with decorum. And when you want to speak, the president recognizes the person to speak. That's the way, especially a 13-member board, you guys saw what it was. It's a free-for-all. And until we get some decorum, which I believe we're heading in that direction with some new leadership, I think it's going to really help. But right now, like I say, we're just trying to get through things. So I, as a commissioner, would be more than happy to sit down with, and again, we can't meet more than two of us. I can't meet with one of my other colleagues, so it'd be me, and I'd be more than happy to do that. But if I was presented something that's highlighted, that says, this is what we have questions about. Not the setback, because the setback is not an IC code that we got to worry about. I think we've come up with an ordinance that the solar companies could live with that this, they say, and we've heard this. It's a restrictive ordinance. We're going to work around it, but that's what we've heard. And a lot of people, including Mr. Hartman, Mr. Atkins, they think we're on the solar company's side. I guarantee you, if one comes, I'm going to be out there monitoring everything that a solar company is going to be doing. I'm telling you. Because what I want to do, and we're trying to work with a smaller project right now. They talked about Indiana Wesleyan University, they want to put one in. I'd love for them to get going on while we're meeting with AEP so we can learn from that smaller one. So when we do get a big one, what we might be able to expect. So that's, I don't want to bore you anymore, but those are the things that I feel as a commissioner that the commissioners are on the right page when it comes to welcoming economic development, trying to bring in cash money as outside money. They're not looking for free land like most developers do. They're not looking for infrastructure, they're not looking for roads, water, sewer. They're not going to steal employees from our existing employee base, which we all know is a serious problem in our community of trying to find help. Right? They're not doing any of that. They're coming, putting some panels in the field. I understand this farm, productive farm ground, but in the same token, we've got 190,000 acres. And again, the max on this thing is probably somewhere around 4,000 acres. I say that, they would say that there's eminent domain. That is a true statement. You totally can do that if they so choose to. Probably not going to happen. We don't know that, but probably not going to happen. Could we put a cap in the ordinance to say only X amount of acreage would be taken? We could do that. But I've never heard that number that they're talking about. They've never come to us and asked us. You know, those are the things that, like I say, two-story, there's three sides to every story, right? Counselor, you write three sides to every story. So that's all I have.
Yours mine and the truth.
Thank you. Good. Any questions?
I got a question for Steve. You remember who presented the concern about the development plan to the APC?
I remember that there was a question about the development plan.
Do you remember who presented that to the APC?
I think, did you do that, Randy?
And you were sitting across the table from me, and as I read off the Indiana code, you said, now what is that Indiana code?
And I wrote it down.
And you wrote that Indiana code down. So for you to say that no one has come to you in regard to the concern about that particular Indiana code, that would be a false statement.
No. I don't think we need to get in.
Yeah, yeah. One other thing. I did ask the question of the APC, that that is the same attorney that drafted number seven. There's a lot of things. We also, the APC voted on not just to take a look at the ordinance itself, but also take a look at conflict of interest and bias. And honestly, on that board, there's a lot of that. And so that's, I was noticing that wasn't mentioned tonight by these two that presented. And I, you know, I think there's a lot of that that's going on, and I worry about that for our community. Thank you.
Well, I think you got, I mean, it's a brother Dodge, we're going to have to hire this lawyer to make sure we're right.
I agree. I think they're asking us to finance a fight.
Well, I'll tell you what. I'll tell you what. I'll donate the $6,000 to myself.
As a private citizen?
As a private citizen.
Fantastic.
So we can see, make sure you're right, make sure they're right. There you go.
But I, I.
Wait a minute. What, Mr. Atkins, why are you shaking your head? No. It's $6,000.
I don't believe it's Chuck's responsibility to do that. I think it's the responsibility of this council to make sure that there's a code that says before this council.
Yeah, but once you find this out, you can bring it back, correct, Mike?
What's that?
If something is wrong with state code, they can come back to it.
I'm sure they would like to know, and I would like to know.
Exactly.
Yeah.
I'll pay it.
We really did not come to ask any person to pay this.
I want to tell the justice. Counselor, shut up and sit down. You won.
This is the county's best. It's not their responsibility. The council members allow one member to.
Don't please me. Okay. Thanks, Joe. Thanks, Dylan.
But I personally, I guess, would say it's not really a responsibility either. But I think that we have an ordinance in hand, even though I disagree with part of the ordinance. I don't know that I want to throw out $6,000 because the, I think the, it gets too close to my house. I don't agree with it. You know what I'm getting at? That's the point of what they're asking for. Is it an ordinance that is by state statutes? And if it comes back and it isn't ordered by state statute, you throw it away.
Yeah, but because the commissioners have to know by state statute, right?
Yeah.
We all do.
So if you find something wrong, then they have to sit down and they say, commissioners, this is wrong. They've got to change it by state statute, right? They can't override the state.
We all have to follow the law.
I don't blame Chuck's responsibility to donate the funds either. And I think that this body should step up and support the red line copy of what violates the state statute and what doesn't, and work together with APC, BZA, and commissioners.
And I don't know how that's going to happen, whether or not, because you got such, we, I mean, you got such a so Dodge, you're going to have to have somebody else to make this call. I'm telling you. You agree? You agree?
Yes. I think everybody does. I don't know who that person is. I honestly don't know that this Mr. Hess. There's a part of me that feels that he's a little bit leaning towards one side of it.
Well, the basic.
Well, should go to.
Yeah, but the basic thing is, we just got to make sure we're within the law, correct, Mike? If that ordinance, whatever it is, which is within the law, then they're good to go, right?
Everybody has to follow the law.
You will see from his work experience, he works both sides of that issue. He represents counties as well as BZA. He represents individuals as well as county government. He works both sides of these issues. Here we have an executive board, the APC does. He's on it. I'm on it. And there's a couple of members from the BZA on it. We need to sit down, go over it, and then if we decide we need to get a lawyer, then maybe come back and get it, and then let that executive board take care of it. And if there's a problem, let them deal with the commissioners on getting it fixed. And quit this goat road here we've got to have, because that's pretty much what it's been. Too much arguing.
Too much.
If you guys are okay with that, and you want to appropriate the money then for a lawyer, if we decide that there needs to be something done from the executive board, there's at least anything, whether it's a majority, if somebody thinks there's something wrong there, then we need to continue and do it.
Also, I hear there needs to be compromises somewhere on both sides.
Yeah, there's needs.
There's not going to be a compromise, then it's just, we're just wasting time.
Well, there's not going to be a compromise as long as they're following the state law, correct?
As long as everything's followed by the state law, we're good. Whether we like it or not, as long as it's followed by the state law. You know, that ordinance has been passed, signed, it is, but we want to make sure it is. Because we don't want to get down the road 10 or 15 years, find out something wasn't right, and then we come back and get sued for a few million dollars to clean up a mess. Because that would suck.
Yeah.
As far as you telling somebody you don't want to tell landowners what they can and can't do, I cannot put a large animal in there because you guys said we can't do it. So I won't hear that crap no more.
So what is the rule of council?
Because when you put a large animal thing in, you're getting a piece of the wood.
Mr. President, I just wanted to comment on something Mr. Scott had mentioned earlier. I confirmed just now, Ms. Jarvis, there's been no advertisement for this appropriation. So I don't think the council's in any position to take action tonight on whether or not this would pass or not. I think it has to be advertised and have the first hearing at the next meeting.
Yeah, and that's why I put a transfer of appropriations agenda, thinking that maybe the funds could be transferred from another fund. Obviously, we could always approve additional funding, pending advertisement. If it didn't passionately, then it'd go to two ratings. Right. So. We probably need to have a review by a lawyer before we even have a meeting to settle a lot of conflict.
Now, the easiest way is, guys, let me write the check so we can get on with this, and we can get on with other county business. I'll pay the six grand just to know we're safe. So I'll split it with you. It's not a problem. I mean, we was there. It's never going, it's never.
I've been there too many times.
You guys don't understand, it ain't never going. Somebody don't go in there and say, okay, there is a, there is something wrong, and then the commissioners will have to fix. And if there ain't nothing wrong, then they tell.
You're saying these folks are never going to play nice.
Thank you.
Just one last thing. So the APC is also having a state agency, AIM, review the ordinance, and it's for free. So it is being looked at from a state level.
Mr. President, I make a motion that we table this until such time that we get that report that was just mentioned, and that we basically take further action with the time being.
Motion for a second.
Second thing.
A motion for Mr. Connor, a second for Mr. Welling to table the order of zoning appeals requests for the funding of an attorney, pending review from other attorneys. Other conversations.
Frank, I give, as I give time for your suggestion to the jury.
Yes, I think I'll, I have to be meeting at first Monday. So we'll have to try and get, I think we have to wait until 10 days. There are certain deadlines before we have an executive. I don't know exactly how long we have to wait.
Yeah, 48, 48 hours.
Yes. So I have a motion and a second. Any public input? Public input.
We'll call this.
Connor.
Yes.
Limming.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yeah.
Borbok.
Aye.
Holing.
Yes.
It was working.
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item under new business, item D, library appointment. Can you have any?
Yeah, we're all through this. I was perfect.
I'm adding item D.
Yeah, you need to add an item.
Yeah, I added item D, the library appointment.
And a public notice.
Public notice. Can you read what it is?
It's mayor public library to.
Our current appointment is Cindy Ketchum. She's asking them to be reappointed. It's known as body advertises the appointments to take applications. So we'll take applications till March 15th.
Yes.
If you know anybody that's interested. Next item, that's all the new business. We'll move on to old business. Item A, county health department, interim director, additional appropriation COVID testing grant fund.
I'm speaking on behalf of Dr. Rudolph, but first, everybody just. Nobody did it.
Appreciate you having a point.
We would like to continue offering two nights a month and two Saturdays a month child vaccinations for families who have a hard time getting their vaccine in. It was like overtime funding out of the leftover coded testing grant fund in the amount of $5,000 for the overtime and then three for Vicodin and seven to the Per. It would be our full-time nurse and our full-time receptionist slash billing clerk. And then we have a part-timer that we would just use out of regular accounting funds.
And we approved this at the last meeting. We lost the, there was no advertisement, right?
Right, because we took it from the health fund to this COVID. Switched it.
So we're right, yeah, we just switch them to the COVID.
Yes, to a different fund, yes, without using county tax. We're going to talk about that soon.
Any questions or comments? If there are, then I entertain a motion.
I make a motion we pass.
Second.
I have a motion for Mr. Holing, a second for Mr. Welling to approve additional appropriation within the COVID testing grant fund in the following amounts, overtime and the amount of $5,000, Vicodin, the amount of $383, and Per, from the amount of $710. Any other questions or comments, Frank? Public input? We'll call this.
Holing.
Yes.
Limming.
Aye.
Scott.
Scott?
Aye.
Connor?
I'm staying.
Hicks?
Yeah.
Warbach?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes. I believe we will have to have a second reading, because it didn't pass your name today.
I can change to a yes, I was speaking to Ed, and I was listening, I can't multitask, but.
Could I remind you that we did discuss this last month, and it was approved? You asked me to take it out of the department.
I asked. If this is an additional appropriation in that fund.
Out of the grant.
And it'd have to be unanimous this vote, to not have a second reading.
I'll just say yes.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
On advice of Council.
It's getting late.
That's why they took their clock out. Next item under old business, item B, Grand County Visitors Bureau, John Leidy, appointment to the Grand County Visitors Bureau Board. There's two, Gas City Development Committee reappointment, I believe the committee, Chairman Mr. Lemon.
Yeah, Mr. Leidhong has given us a letter that he would like to keep Travis LaMaster on his board appointee, and we just need to go forward with that. As far as Mr. Bill Rock, he's looking to add Adam Skenes for the Gas City Development Committee as his appointment, and we just need to approve those. There's no other applications for each one.
What was the name for Gas City?
It was Gas City Development Committee.
Adam Skenes?
Adam Skenes, certainly.
Any questions or comments? Those were the only two applications we received for those positions. I entertain a motion. So moved. Second. I have a motion for Mr. Scott, second for Mr. Holing to appoint Travis LaMaster to the Grand County Visitors Bureau, and to appoint Adam Skenes to the Gas City Development Committee. Any other questions or comments from the members? Public input? We'll call, please.
Scott?
Aye.
Holing?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yeah.
Warbach?
Aye.
Limming?
Aye.
Middlesworth?
Yes. Motion carries. I believe that's all the old businesses. Any members having old business? Reports, resolutions, communications, general discussions, any committee reports? At this time, I'll win, at Westgate, I entertain some public comments. At this time, I open the floor for public comments, a two-minute time limit, telepony and state maiden address. Any public comments?
They're here two hours ago.
Public comments. Upcoming meetings, regular meeting Wednesday, March 15th, 2023. When are we gonna get a calendar?
Is that a county?
Oh, okay.
Y'all have.
Yes, thanks.
I'm still talking, huh?
Well, after half-day, it's fast.
Or shall I say the dog?
That's supposed to.
Yes, yes. All right, see you guys.